Welcome to the October 3, 2018 Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in executive session since 6 o'clock discussing contractual matters and individual personnel matter. And we will stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll do introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Meredith Moriarty.
Willow Bear.
Jody Monroe.
Michael Cooper.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Christine Beck.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Judy Kehoe.
And item number two is approval of the minutes of the September 20, 2018 Regular Board Meeting.
Show move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. At this time, we would like to have a moment of silence for Justin Brown, who was a 10 year employee of the Information Technology Department for the district, and he passed away suddenly last week. He was greatly beloved in the district. He was probably in every classroom in every building throughout the district, and he will be sorely missed and difficult to replace. So if we could take a minute for silence, please. Do we have anyone here from the Student Senate? Come up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm PJ Namkum, the Vice President. So right now, we're working on organizing a dunk tank for Homecoming Day, which will be acted as fundraiser for the Backpack Program and other activities that Student Senate's funding. And so we're reaching out to a bunch of faculty members throughout the district who volunteer to be dunked if they choose to.
In October?
Yeah.
Better than November.
We ran freshman elections last week, and so the six representatives that were elected just joined our homeroom on Monday. And then we have a couple of clubs that are in development for approval. I think Photo Club is the next one to be approved right now, so that's... Thank you.
Any questions? Next is Superintendent's Report.
Do you want to remind pig students when they come?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, former president. Pig students, your obligation is to stay until 9 o'clock or until the end of the meeting, if that ends before 9. At the end of the meeting, you need to come up and sign the sheets here, and if you need something signed for your teacher, just see any of the board members. If the meeting does go past 9 o'clock, we will take a break at 9, so you can come up and depart. Okay.
Okay.
Superintendent.
I'd like to congratulate Mrs. DeRay Mahmood. She's a math teacher at the high school, and she received the University of Chicago's Outstanding Educator Award. One of our prior students, Juliette Thibodeau, sorry, graduated in June, and she's enrolled at the university, and she had this to say about Mrs. Mahmood. "I'm profoundly grateful for having had the fortune of being one of your students for the past two years. You've had an enormous impact on my life, not only teaching me math, but also instilling me a curiosity and drive to pursue the challenges that will come my way. You have been so much more than a teacher." So I wanted to congratulate DeRay, and I know probably many students here have had her at some point. I'd also like to congratulate Rachel Rabit, who was selected as one of this year's 275 teachers to join the New York State Master Teacher Program for Valuable Leadership and Skills in STEM Education. She just found us out yesterday. So she's one of eight of our BCT teachers who have been accepted into the program, which began in 2013. Also received a thank you letter from a parent who were recognizing some members in our Transportation Department. She recognized two bus drivers, Patrick McCormett and Joyce Tarbox, along with attendants Nick Demuth and Tina Benoit, who saw a young student and dogs walking on a busy road in Glenmont, knowing something was wrong. So they stopped, the bus halted traffic, got the student and the two dogs to safety until the child's parent was on the scene. So I thought that was great. So I'd like to thank them, and thank you to the parent for letting me know. That's my report.
Next is the Board of Education Report. Jonathan?
Last Tuesday, I had the opportunity and the privilege of speaking to the Lab School at Camp Ginger Cook at their retreat on my experience 25 years ago at the Court of Appeals. The interesting thing was that when I showed them a video of my argument there, that they were equating it to what it must be like, the freshmen, what it must be like to go before the Board of Examiners. And it was a very healthy discussion. The students were very animated, and it was really a pleasure and a privilege to go back and be part of the Lab School again. Also, this past Friday, I was a guest of my wife at the BCTA Union's barbecue for teachers, and they put on a very nice event, and I have to say I'm going to enjoy dinosaur barbecue again. I've never been there, but they catered it, and the union really did a nice job for the teachers.
Anyone else?
Sure, I had two things. Two weekends ago was the Hammagrail Fall Picnic, which was, for me, my first one, there were literally hundreds of people that showed up on a Sunday to hula hoop and eat, and it was a really sort of heartwarming reminder of why I love this district. So congratulations to Hammagrail on that event. October is the kindness campaign for the No Place For Hate group. I'm the Board Liaison for that group, and I'm really excited to be working with them. Monday, seeing all of the blue everywhere was, for me, really rewarding. Nail polish station in the high school, and I know there's a lot more events happening throughout the month of October, so I just wanted to remind people to look out for those.
And we did the Start School Later Committee meeting was the first one was last week. I filled in for Willow, and it was pretty productive for the first initial meeting, and Mike was there as well. And so the next one is scheduled like a month from now.
Yeah, I just sent out minutes today, and we have a date to have a collaborative meeting with Gilderlin and Niskiuna. I believe it's November 5 that was in the email that went out today for if we can get a few reps from that committee to attend. And actually, we'll be here in less than half.
Okay, great. That was it for me.
Did you want to report out on the policy committee?
You can, if you'd like.
Sure. The Policy Committee met last Monday, and you'll see on the agenda later, those are all the policies that we took a look at that are up for first read tonight. And then we did also, we were also looking at the social media policy, but are still having some discussions about that.
Anyone else?
I had the opportunity to volunteer in Robin Reed's first grade class. This week, I read a book to the students, and every time I'm in a classroom, especially for our younger children, I'm struck by how much our teachers are teaching our children beyond academics. You know, there was a big emphasis on manners, politeness, making eye contact while speaking with an adult, and I think those skills are so important to teach our kids when interacting with other adults, other members of our society, and with each other. So I just wanted to shout out to her what a wonderful classroom she has, and what a tremendous task all of our teachers have, especially those in the younger grades.
Two Fridays ago, went to the varsity football game, and I can safely report that the hot chocolate is very good. Also, I just wanted to, I'm saying this because I just wanted to let the students know that it's really nice that you come out and support your classmates. The entire left hand and right hand side of the section was filled with students there to cheer on their team, their fellow classmates, and that's a really nice thing that makes our district a wonderful place to be, you know, because people are willing to support their fellow classmates.
Anything else? Our presentation tonight is our annual audit report, and that will get started by Judy Kehoe.
This is one of the highlights for the Business Office when we wrap up the audit each year. We spend our summer months working through the preparation of the financial statements, making sure everything is accurate and ready for the auditors, and then they come in, they spend some quality time with us doing all their testing, and the issuance of their report is the conclusion of the fiscal year for us. Next slide, please. Okay. This is the part where we demonstrate with transparency what the financial results were for the district. There are compliance reports that come out from the auditors as to how we did relative to our federal grants. There's an assessment of our internal controls. So this is all to show that we take the responsibility of managing our $97 million budget and managing it appropriately in accordance with our fiduciary duties. Tonight, we are fortunate, we have Chris Healy, who was one of the lead auditors with Marvin and Company, and we're going to start out by allowing him to present what they found during the audit, and then after that, I'll step back up and just go through a recap of what the numbers were.
Thank you, Judy. So I'll keep this pretty short and sweet. I passed out a one-page kind of summary there. I thought that would be a little bit easier than trying to go through and flip pages. I know Judy will touch on some of the numbers and those sorts of things after I'm finished, so I won't get too far into that. There are copies of the reports for everybody up here after we're finished. So if you look at page 1 and 2 of our report in the big, thick packet here, that's our auditor's report on the district financial statements. Our opinion is that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, so that's a clean opinion, that's what you strive for. We had no major adjustments, we had no adjustments to the financial statements, so that means the reports that you're receiving throughout the year are correct. That's good information, so that's important to note. The first section of those financial statements is Management's Discussion and Analysis. That's a really good spot to go for a high-level summary of what happened. There's some discussion of more qualitative factors as well as quantitative factors that impacted the year. So I encourage you to, if you read nothing else, read through that section, and it'll give you a good high-level summary. The next portion, pages B1 and B2, that's your district-wide financial statements, so that's on the full accrual basis of accounting. That takes into account all of your assets and liabilities, long-term assets and liabilities. One important thing to note this year is your net position, which is the kind of the net of your assets and your liabilities for the year. You'll see a significant decrease in that net position this year. That is due to a new accounting standard that you were required to implement this year, GASB number 75, which has to do with your retiree health insurance. So we've been talking about that for a few years when we come in and do our presentations. This year was finally the year, so that added about $146 million to your liabilities. In the past, that full number was in the back of your report on a separate schedule. The new standard requires that it's put into the actual financial statements themselves. So the information was there in the past, but now it's more front center. The next section is pages B3 and B4, that's your governmental fund financial statements. This is probably what you're used to seeing in your reports from the Business Office, reports each of the funds in a separate column. It's important to note you were under the 4% unassigned fund balance limit that's imposed on you by real property tax law. You were at, I believe, 3.96%, so you're under that number, which is good. Your general fund revenues exceeded your expenditures by 2.4 million, so you had a surplus in the general fund. But as I note a little bit further down on the sheet, your revenues were only 516,000 over budget, which is 0% of your budget, so that's pretty spot on. And your expenditures were under budget by 2 million. That's only 2% of your budget, so all in all, that's pretty right on the numbers there. The notes to your financial statements are the rest of the B section. I pointed out a couple pages that might be of particular interest. B16 has your fund balances, so your reserves. B34 and 35 has your debt payout schedules and balances. And then page B38 to B41, this is all new information this year for your retiree health liability, so that's that new standard, has a bunch of information in there, assumptions, it talks about what happens if the discount rate changes, so there's some good information in there. Page E1 and E2, this is our report on internal control and compliance. This is required by government auditing standards, so as part of our audit process, we take into account your internal controls, and we don't provide an opinion on that, but if anything came to our attention that warranted reporting to you, we would do that. We have nothing to report on that. And then finally, the single audit, so because you expend more than $750,000 in federal awards, you're required to have the single audit. Our report on internal control over compliance is unmodified, so that's a clean opinion again there. We did have one finding that we discussed with the Audit Committee related to payroll certification. So your employees that are charged to the federal grant are required to sign off acknowledging that they're aware that they're being paid for with federal money. One of those could not be located, and I believe we tested 15 to 20 of those, so only one of those was missing. We looked at the rest, and there was no other issue, so we didn't feel that that was a material weakness. F3 and 4, that shows all of your awards, broken down by the programs, and then the last page, F6, is the summary of the audit results, so that has a good summary of the entire audit and lets you know that special education to the IDEA grants were the programs that we tested relative to the single audits. Just like to thank Judy and the staff. They really did a great job getting us everything timely, always prepared for us, answering our questions, so thank you to Judy and staff. Any questions?
Does the Board have any questions for Chris?
No, I just forgot to mention that we had the Audit Committee meeting on Monday where he went over this report in detail, so this is the abridged version, but we went through it thoroughly. So it was Willow, myself, and Jonathan. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
So as Chris noted, the initial section of the financial statement are the district-wide numbers, and that really is trying to give the public a sense of what the district's financial statements would look like if we were, in fact, reporting the way private sector companies do. I have not emphasized that within these summaries tonight because I believe that the most relevant thing for you and for the community is to look at how we did in our general fund, which is the main operating fund for the district. The post-retirement obligations that had changed this year created some truly shock-and-awe numbers on that district-wide report with the addition of $146,000 to the liabilities. Because we pay for those types of costs going forward, we control them through other means within contracts, and we monitor it, the fund-level reporting and the budgetary focus that comes with that is really what's most important operationally for us. But because of the accounting standards, we do have to report it in both views. Looking at the general fund, these comparative numbers just give you a sense that our overall expenditure certainly did not change significantly. It's less than a 1% increase if you look at the actual numbers this year compared to last year. As Chris had noted, we were about $2 million under budget, which is right about where we should be coming in, somewhere between 3% or so under budget. We, of course, never want to go over. Being over on the revenues, though, that's okay, because that's the better result, showing that we're using more conservative estimates when we're developing that. So the general support numbers and the instructional numbers cover most of the operations for the district and the instructional program. Those increases that you're noting are primarily from the increases in the staffing costs and supply costs. It's a relatively small percentage. The instructional increase was about 1.5% higher than the prior year. Transportation, part of the increase there. Recall, in the '17-'18 school year, we had added the two new bus routes for students living out in the Clarksville area in order to minimize their ride times, so part of that increase is reflecting that change in the program. The other increases are all just the operating costs for salaries and for fuel. The employee benefits overall did not increase significantly. I have another slide after this that I'll show you, that breakdown of what is in that number. Debt service, of course, was a scheduled reduction. Recall, we had talked about how our scheduled payments would be decreasing, and that was what was going to give us the capacity to absorb the debt service payments that will be required once we do the bonding for the new capital project. So this is all kind of old news for you, because I feel like we've been talking about it both as part of the budget development for '17-'18, and now we're just doing the recap of what really happened. The transfers outnumber decreased. There was a larger number in that expense in the prior year because of some write-offs that we had done on some older receivables of state aid for the extended school year program, and that was a much lower number in '17-'18, which is why that reduction is there.
Judy, before you go on, you mentioned that part of the transportation increase, which is about $357,000, was for the two Clarksville runs. My understanding-
Oh, not the whole 350,000.
Well, that's what I wanted.
No, 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 no.
That was the only thing you mentioned, and when we passed it, that was not my understanding.
Oh, no. Yeah, we had estimated when we had budgeted that that was going to be 30,000.
30,000, that's right.
Yeah, so, no, that increase is larger than just the regular operating cost because of the addition of those two runs. So I'm so glad you asked that, so I could clarify that. It's really a small piece of the overall budget.
Thank you.
Okay. On the fringe benefits, as we've talked about during budget time, the largest component of that represents our insurance costs. That is for both our active employees and our retired employees, and that is our health insurance and our dental insurance. The TRS is a reduction. We've talked about those fluctuations in the rates. We had close to a 2% reduction in that rate for the '17-'18 school year. It was about a 0.3% reduction on the ERS rate, so with the salary growth, that was relatively stable. The line for workers' comp and other miscellaneous benefits decreased this year, and that was a reflection of some larger settlements of older claims for workers' comp in the prior year. So overall, the total combined increase is only 3.6% in the fringe benefit, so that is right about where we would love to see it. Anything in single digits is positive for the district. On the revenues, we had an increase of 0.8%. The school taxes, that increase is reflected from the 0.81% levy increase that we had in '17-'18, and that yielded about a $512,000 increase. The reason we have more revenues there than that 512 reflects a shift in the STAR program. Recall, we had talked about this last year, where the state is taking over that program now, so any new homeowners need to go directly to the state to have those benefits approved. So when that happens, it goes from the state to the homeowners, and the district is essentially the middleman that is cut out of that process. So that reduction that you see in the STAR pilot line is partially offset by that increase in the school taxes line item. The state and federal aid was relatively constant. The interest income, you may have noticed interest rates had started to tick up over this past year, so that positive increase and the positive variance was a reflection of higher interest that we're earning on the monies that we invest for the district. The miscellaneous other revenues is a change that will vary from one year to the next. That was primarily from some reimbursements of prior-year expenses that hit in '16-'17 that just were not at that same level in '17-'18. And I believe that was primarily for the OCMBOSIs, for our utility consortium participation. The debt service reserve is new. That should sound familiar to you. Recall that this, we started to transfer the monies from that reserve in as a funding source, and that was the initial year's transfer in from that reserve, and then you will see that amount in there every year going forward until that fund is exhausted. Our fund balance overview, as Chris had noted, we're just under the required 4% for our undesignated percentage. That percentage is taken with your undesignated component as a percentage of the subsequent year's budget, so we're right where we need to be with that. These other changes in the fund balance amounts had all been approved by the Board at the August meeting when the tax rates were set and these reserve amounts were established. The school lunch fund, we had reviewed in August when Elisa Isner gave her presentation, so I won't spend a lot of time talking about this, only to highlight that while we had budgeted revenues of 1.363 million, we did come in a little bit below that number. However, we still ended the program substantially in the black compared to what we had seen in prior years, because we were also under budget on the expenditure slide. So for that, we came in almost $50,000 less than what we had budgeted. You note some fluctuations, an actual reduction in employee benefits. That's part of what we grapple with each year on the health insurance when we budget those numbers. If people change their level, either up or down, it can cause some variances there. But again, we were able to come in under budget, and the total surplus for the year for the food service program was actually $26.6,000. We had reported it at, I believe, around 23,000, and there was one other adjustment that we had found between that August meeting and when the auditors had come in. So for a program that had been running in the red for many, many years to see a surplus in the prior year, and again, this year is just a terrific position for us to be in, I'm thrilled when I see the support for the program going forward. And that is the, as promised, quick recap of the financial statements and results. If there are any questions? Are you happy to answer them?
I think it was on the, one of the food service slides, POS fees, is that point of service?
Point of sale. That relates to the keypad system where students have their IDs and staff, and they can put money on the account. Parents will put money on the account through the My School Bucks off the website, and then that pays for lunch.
Okay. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you again to Chris, and thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't thank both Phyllis Albano and Martha Shea, because they are absolutely the professional elves working behind the scenes and put together that 75-plus page financial statement. They're supporting work papers for that consume multiple binders, so we really appreciate their professionalism and the many, many hours of work that they put into helping us get a clean audit opinion, and no journal entries. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy, and thank you again, Chris. Next is recognition of visitors on an agenda item. The Board recently revised the guidance- The board recently revised the guidance for visitor comments, so I would like to read that to you. The board values and welcomes civil, respectful statements and clear, concise communications that inform its deliberations. The board uses the public comment period as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but will not debate issues or enter into a question and answer session. It is also important that no person addressing the board initiate charges or complaints about individual board members or employees or students of the district. Such charges or complaints should be presented directly to the superintendent. Speakers are encouraged to provide the board with a written copy of their comments and other appropriate supporting documentation, but is not required. To address the Board of Education, please, one, wait to be called upon by the board president. Two, at the microphone, please state your full name. Three, direct your comments to the board. Do not turn and speak to the audience. Four, keep your comments as concise as possible. Five, speakers are expected to treat others with respect, confining their remarks to school district issues. And six, do not use the public speaking portions of board meetings to make personal statements about any individual or engage in any commentary that is slanderous or abusive. The board president may rule any speaker out of order who makes such statements. So do we have anyone who would like to comment? Okay, can come to the microphone.
Good evening. My name's Heather Spitzberg. I have two fifth graders at Slingerlands. I wanted to say thank you for starting work so quickly on the school scheduling committee. And thank you to the board members who volunteered extra time to partake in that. I think, as many of you know, that's something I've been very supportive of in the past, and I'm really thankful that's moving forward, and look forward to recommendations coming out. I wanted to point your attention to two recent articles that came out in both CNN and Education Week on the mat on the issue of school start times, and I will forward those to Jody for distribution to you all. And I was also going to point out Gilderland and Niskiuna's efforts, and I'm super excited to actually hear you're going to all work together, or at least have a meeting together to discuss these issues. So thank you all very much.
Anyone else? Next is finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, 1 through 3.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. And thank you again to everybody who was involved in the audits. I know it's laborious work, but-
It's joyful.
Okay, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, 1 through 9.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, 1 through 8.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, 1 through 2.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. We will now recognize visitors on non-agenda items, and the same rules apply. Is there anyone? Well-picked students, I think you're going to be very lucky tonight. Future meetings and events, the next board meeting is on Wednesday, October 7th. It says 5 o'clock?
17.
The 17th, yeah.
Should be.
It says, okay. So 6 o'clock anticipated executive session and 7 o'clock regular board meeting, and that will be held at Hammagrail Elementary. And then on Wednesday, November 7th, we will have a board meeting at the high school, 6 o'clock executive session, 7 o'clock public board meeting. And then on Wednesday, November 28th, we will have a board meeting at Elsmere Elementary with a 6 o'clock anticipated executive session and a 7 o'clock regular board meeting. Unless there's anything else, there's no reason for us to go back into executive session. So can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstaining? Any objecting? I didn't think so. Okay, picked students, come on up.